I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
Councilmember Capes?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Strawn?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counselor, are there any items which need to be added or deleted or changed on the agenda?
I do not have anything. So I would make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up for the public comment period?
Nobody signed up.
We'll proceed to old business. And Dave, would you talk to us about the interlocal agreement with Guilford County?
We did receive approval from Guilford County on the interlocal agreements, but as the town attorney and we went over them, we felt like there was a few things in there that we needed to change. And so we will bring these back at the August meeting. We probably need to confer, you know, with Guilford County on some of the wording. And there's no major things in there, but before I brought it back for y'all for approval, I wanted to have it near perfect, if not perfect. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We need to make a motion to continue this interlocal agreement with Guilford County and the library to the August 17th meeting?
Yes, ma'am. That'd be great.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Judy, would you present the information?
Well, we'll just be the same thing with the animal control too?
Yeah, that would be great.
Both of those?
Yes.
You want that as a separate motion?
That would be great.
Okay.
And I guess we'll do that, make a motion to continue the interlocal agreement with Guilford County Animal Shelter for Control Services to the August 17th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Judy.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So we did contract with four of our organizations, the Y, JYL, the Library, and the Historic Society. This past year contracted for recreation services, library services, and historic cultural services. So we did receive a request from these four agencies for further contracting of services in the current fiscal year. I did receive, let's see, received one from JYL and the Y for, again, recreation services. They requested, in the current budget now, let me tell you that first, for recreation services is $25,500. So that's the total that's in the budget that we could contract between those two organizations. JYL requested $25,500. YMCA requested $23,545. And these were broken down into different youth sports. JYL was all youth sports. The Y had some different activities. Youth sports was the big one. Yoga in the park. They had some swim and safety around water, different things like that. So in trying to figure out how we could allocate the amount we have in the budget between those two organizations, I went back and looked to see what we had actually paid them last year. We contracted in, for certain amounts. And then what we did was paid out half of that amount. And we said, okay, at the end of the fiscal year, or before the end of the fiscal year, you need to give us documentation showing how many Jamestown residents participated in these sports activities. So they did that. And we actually found that there were quite a bit less Jamestown residents who were actual residents of Jamestown than they had anticipated or thought, you know, were actual residents. So we ended up not paying out as much as we had contracted for. So in trying to determine what we should contract for this year, in the current year, I figured the percentages of the two that we had paid out in recreation services. So JYL, we actually paid out 42% of our actual amounts that we paid out. And the Y, 58%. So as a recommendation, I would recommend that we pay out, or contract with rather, 42% of the budgeted amount of $25,500 to the JYL, because that's what we actually paid them, percentage we paid them last year. And then the other 58% to the Y. So those amounts would be for JYL, $10,710. And for the Y, $14,790. In addition, we contracted with the library for library services. Last year, the amount was $52,000. We did receive a quest for $54,000 this year. And we do have that amount in the budget. So I would recommend that we contract with the library again for library services in the amount of $54,000. We did receive, after the abstract had gone out, we did receive a request from the Historic Society. But I had some questions about it and did not receive an answer until just a couple hours ago. So we had already decided that we would delay that, put it on the agenda for next month, and talk about the Historic Society next month.
That sounds good.
So I would recommend, at this point, that we would contract with JYL for sports services, youth sports services, in the amount of $10,700. The Y, in the amount of $14,790. And the library, in the amount of $54,000. And again, we would pay out, if approved, we would pay out half of this amount upfront. And then upon receiving documentation of Jamestown residents that participated in these sports, then we would pay out the rest of the funding, you know, as the participation showed. So.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Judy?
Well, like we were talking earlier, I'm glad that you talked to the Y and had them prioritize what would be the top ones. Because in looking at some of these, seemed a little bit questionable if it could really be related to citizens of Jamestown, which the general statute has changed that we have to do it that way. So I'm glad you did that.
Yeah, and I did, I did forget to mention that. But I had requested the Y to let me know what their priorities were. And it was youth sports, yoga in the park were their top two. And that would take all the funding for those two activities.
Any other questions?
A quick question. The amounts to date, or the amount of participation of Jamestown residents, do they associate that any with the world falling apart because of COVID? Folks not coming out, that sort of thing? Did they say that their percentages of total membership was down from the year prior?
The Y didn't really say. I think their participation overall was down. JYL sent us a list of all their participants. And we, from the addresses, we picked out the Jamestown residents. There were a lot that had Jamestown addresses, but they weren't in-town residents.
Okay.
So I think that's part of, you know, the variance there with JYL.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any questions?
And we know for sure that the YMCA, I mean, were we able to cut that list the same way to know? Or how they came about knowing how many Jamestown residents were? Or did they just use, you know?
They did not give us addresses.
Okay.
They did tell us Jamestown residents, so.
So just we, I don't know. That seems, I like doing it percentage-based. I think that's right. But I mean, we know the JYL numbers, but the Y numbers, I mean, I'm sure they just use their, you know, if they're Jamestown. And I don't want that to cut against JYL, but.
Yeah, I do agree. We have asked for years for a concise listing from them. I'm not sure we've ever gotten it in a comprehensive level from the Y. But there we are.
That is something that we could request this year.
Yeah.
Probably good to.
Just go forward.
Put forth a formal request at the beginning of the year so that we can at least be ready next year. So, well, if nobody else has any questions, I'll make a motion to provide the $14,790 for services to be provided by the Y, $10,710 for services to be provided by the JYL, and $54,000 for services to be provided by the Jamestown Public Library. And allow the finance director to update contracts and enter into the contracts for services specified.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Cliff, would you give us the information on the Rotary Parade?
Is Santa Claus coming to town this year?
What's that?
Is Santa Claus coming to town this year?
We hope he's coming. Well, Santa Claus came last year.
He did come last year.
Down the street.
And that was a great improvised thing to do.
Well, thank you. It was kind of a last minute.
Yeah.
It was a fantastic.
It really was.
I project on that level without necessarily having any audio help. It was great.
Thank you. Well, anyway, I am here just to ask for a special events permit for a Christmas parade, we hope, on December 5th, along with the usual nonprofit funding for law enforcement and postage, and the town staff support, as they have in the past, for helping with traffic control cleanup and other organizational work that they do with us. Do you have any questions?
I'm just, I'm thrilled that y'all are gonna do it this year. And I hope all goes well, that, you know, we can go on without any setbacks.
Well, we know what the fallback plan is now, and we certainly hope to do it, though.
Definitely have to now.
Yes, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And Marcy, would you give us the golf course report, please?
So the golf course continues to be doing really well. The numbers that I'm gonna quote are from, they're comparing this past fourth quarter with, actually with 2019, since we were closed for six weeks last year because of COVID. The total number of paid rounds in the fourth quarter for this year were 10,169 compared to 9,400 rounds in 2019. The total green fee revenues were up approximately 17% compared to the fourth quarter in 2019. Cart and range revenue is up around 27%, 28% compared to 2019. And it says for the yearly summary, total rounds for 2021 were 31,400 compared to 1819, which was 26,500. So up about 35%. The grill, it continues to be open, just on actually shorter hours than, you know, there for a while, we were operating Wednesday through Sunday. But now with Cindy out, we're trying to do Thursday through Sunday with the lady that we've hired.
Any questions for Marcy?
That's great. People are out there playing.
They sure are. I mean, it's.
And the heat doesn't bother a golfer, does it?
Nope. It sure doesn't. So I mean, it's great. The last year's been doing really well.
That's wonderful.
Yep.
Now, if we could just develop a fence that was like rubbery and would bounce back.
Exactly.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marcy.
And Jamie, would you tell us about the golf course maintenance?
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Good to see you all again.
Good to see you.
Likewise.
We have sold several pieces of equipment. Got the ugly pieces of equipment, used pieces of equipment, old pieces of equipment out of the way. And got some funds for them. So it's looking better up there and making more room for other pieces of equipment. And our mechanic, he continues to do a good job. He's sharpening reels, keeping a fresh cut on the greens, moors. And we're finally getting a hold of everything and getting ahead of the ballgame on that. And the new deep time that we're gonna get, very excited about that. That's gonna help us out a lot. That's gonna be a game changer. Just to get air to the greens, it's gonna help the greens be in better shape all the way around. It's a well-appreciated piece of equipment, and we're gonna put it to good use. Greens, tees, fairways, problem areas, it'll help it tremendously. And the fairways, we put out a fertilizer application in May, and the fairways around the greens, tees, all have responded very well. Everything is green. We got a lot of rain. And we're spraying for weeds, getting rid of the weeds, and just beautifying everything, trying to stick to the details and just make it look sharper and more presentable. Software, we implemented a new software called Task Tracker. Keeps up the jobs, keeps up with the hours we put into a certain task, like rake bunkers, mow greens, cut trees, whatever you can think of. You put it in a, on a computer, and it puts it up on a display board in the break room. And everybody knows what to do. And we can track a certain amount of dollars, how many dollars we spent on bunkers, how many dollars we spent on greens, how many dollars we spent on mowing tees, fairways, et cetera. It's a very good tool. Also, equipment. We log our equipment in, and it keeps track of equipment, oil changes, put in work orders, makes a list of work orders for just the mechanic to see. And that's working very well as well. Irrigation repair. We put in a new irrigation computer. It's working well. Judy and I have worked hard on getting this, it's called GSP. It's a technical support. And what it does, it services the computer. If we have any problems, we can call. If anything happens to the computer, they send us a new computer right away. We implemented that in June. Saturday, we had a big lightning flash on one of the holes. It took out the computer, took out the monitor. We got a new computer in today. They came and installed it. And it probably would have cost around six grand if we didn't have that. So that worked very well.
How'd the golfer turn out?
He turned out pretty good. The trees didn't fare so well, though. Two pine trees. So the heads, they're working pretty good. Everything is almost fully operational with the irrigation computer. The heads, we cut the heads on. The problem is the leaks. I mean, we just continue to have leaks. We got 14 on the board right now. And it seems like every week we pick up two. Fix two, get three. So, I mean, we're just, we're fighting irrigation leaks all the time. But we are working hard to alleviate it.
Can't get enough cans of Flexil, can you?
We tried it, slapped it on there, didn't work. May I ask any, I mean, may I take any questions?
I just have one question. Your software, is that tracking your machine hours also?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent.
Machine hour, oil changes. The operator, when he uses the machine, it tracks who uses that machine as well.
As well as the payroll hours going into it?
Yes, sir. It does. We have some details, some metrics about it. The more information we put in it, but we just started it.
Right.
Sounds like a good plan.
Any other questions? Comment?
Appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Judy, you have budget amendment number three for us?
So first, let me give you a little background on this. We received, maybe about a week ago, one half of our ARP funding. We got in the amount of $714,997.72. We should get that same amount in approximately a year. We have until December of 2024 to appropriate these funds, and until December of 2026 to actually expend it all. And so, so the.
And so, so the budget amendment is actually to put this, put the total amount of 1.4 million, approximately, into the budget, because we didn't really know the exact amount, so we didn't put that amount, you know, budget that amount yet. So, we did establish a special rev, we called it a special revenue fund, but the actual correct technical term would be a grants project ordinance fund. I've kinda learned a little bit in the last week or so through Government Finance Officers' Conference, and they talked a lot about the ARP funds. So, this would put the revenue and just allowable expenditures into the budget. The U.S. Treasury is the one that's actually in charge on the federal level of these funds, and they're the ones that will tell us the allowable expenses, that, you know, exactly what you can do with these funds. They have what they have now call an interim final rule, but it's not the final final rule, so, so they're thinking it's a few months out before they'll have the really final rule. And so, you know, they're telling us, don't spend any money yet, wait until at least the final rule is, is out, and we know exactly, you know, what we can do with these funds. They're hoping that perhaps they will open up some more things, you know, that haven't been listed yet that are possible that we can do. So, we will keep an eye on that and, you know, see what comes out of, of the final rule. So, I would ask that you approve the budget amendment in the amount of 1,429,995.44.
Well, I want to make a motion to approve budget amendment number three as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Thank you, Judy, and if now you will talk to us about financing the golf equip.
Okay. So, we did put some golf equipment and a new garbage truck on the CIP, and that was approved as part of the budget. So, I sent out some RFPs to get some quotes from, from three, three local banks, Pinnacle, First Bank, and Carter Bank. And I did these, I sent out a separate proposal for the garbage truck, and then a separate proposal for two pieces of golf equipment, a sprayer, and a sand pro machine. Of the proposals I got back, on the garbage truck, I got just two proposals back, one from First Bank, one from Pinnacle. On the golf equipment, I did get three proposals back, but we really wanna use the same bank for both financings, just for efficiency purposes. And the one that did not give us but one reply had the highest interest rate anyway, so that kinda knocked that, that one out of the picture. The, of the other two, Pinnacle Bank would charge origination fees. First Bank didn't have no fees. Pinnacle was a slightly lower interest rate than First Bank, but just based on looking at the total, the total interest amount based on an amortization schedule, they did not send one even though one was requested. So, I, you know, estimated that using an amortization schedule that I got online. So, in total, looking at the total interest and the total fees, Pinnacle was slightly higher in the total cost than First Bank, and since we also did not budget for any fees, we budgeted for loan payments, debt and interest payment, but no fees. So, I would request that we accept the financing with First Bank for the garbage truck and the golf equipment.
Do you need those in separate motions, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Please. Two separate motions, and I would need you to approve the selection of First Bank for each, each of the proposals, and to authorize the finance director to sign the loan documents. And as well, there is a resolution which authorizes the town to accept the loan proposal, and that will, will need to be signed as well.
Well, I don't know if there's any questions. I would make a motion to approve the financing with First Bank for the golf equipment and authorize the finance officer to sign the loan document and the resolution.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
And if I'll continue with that, then I would make.
Can you approve the resolution?
I just said, I said the loan document and the resolution.
Okay, okay.
And likewise with the, would make a motion to approve the financing with First Bank for the new sanitation truck, and approve for the finance officer to sign the loan documents and the resolution.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Thank you, Judy.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Dave, do you have a manager's report for us?
One of the other things that is happening in the community is, one of our goals is to prepare plans for the construction of a recreation maintenance facility, and I would report that that is underway. We did have a soil survey, and we did find out that there's going to be some, some science on that particular site, but we, so we can plan for that. In other words, there's a certain shifting of the soil that may take place, and this is, happens in some areas, and you can make provisions in terms of how you treat the base to accommodate for that in our metal facility. And, and again, I'm gonna relate that back to outcome four, goal seven, and this is something that was approved by the mayor and the town council for our budget this year. And I wanna report that we are on target, and I know that's been on our capital budget for some years, but we are moving with it, and when we have the plans complete, we'll review them by the staff, and I will brief the board on, you know, what we've come up with, and then we'll go out for bids and receive bids and hopefully be able to award a contract for that much-needed project. And I think when we finally get that particular project going and completed, we will have 4,800 square feet of storage space in the old fairground building at about $17 a square foot for storage of everything that we have. We will have an up-to-date maintenance facility, and I think we will be in good shape for sometime to come. And again, I'm very proud of the work that our golf team is doing. I know Ross will be out, as you all know, for about six weeks, but he'll be back, and Marcy is filling in very ably. And we didn't mean for the computer to get fried, but we, our golf superintendent and finance director were wise enough to sign an agreement for a couple thousand dollars to ensure that we wouldn't have any problems, and we're sad that we had to take advantage of it, but on the other hand, you know, it, it worked out well. He mentioned the irrigation system. I know before he was hired, we did talk about the irrigation system, and Jay Gardner did, and this is something that we'll continue to work on. I would say the course is looking green, the greens are looking better, the fairways, the, the tee boxes, our play is up. And actually, when I go out to the golf course, I, I sit on some of the rockers and have some lunch someday, and anybody that comes to go, I ask them how they played and, and what condition the course was in, and people seem to be nodding that they see improvement out of the course. We haven't near reached where we're gonna reach, but I think our trajectory is good. And unlike my trajectory with the ball that stays low to the ground, I think we have a better trajectory for the course, and I'm very proud of the folks that we have out there. We have a, a new staff, and I, I feel like they're all doing well, and we certainly have challenges, and, and we wanna begin to improve each day.
Dave?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say this on the bids for the recreation maintenance facility you hope would go out in September?
Uh, we'll get the plans back and reviewed, and I'm thinking that we may be able to go out in September, but I'll, you know, I'll wait and see how everything goes. I don't wanna pin us down to a date, but.
Yeah.
We're moving on it, and I know when I was hired in December, y'all said, Mr. Dream, move that on, and I think we have done what you have said. The other thing that, one of, one of our goals, well, this is, we met with United Way, and I have been a big supporter of the United Way, and obviously, the town of Jamestown has been a big supporter of the United Way, and we met with their staff, and when we met with them, we found out that last year we had raised $6,794 and $263 per capita. That is actually very excellent for a group with 28 employees, for a municipality, that would come, come, actually be better than Salisbury and Mooresville. So, our per capita giving was good. I understand we may have had a little help from some of our elected officials, but it all goes for a good cause, and we have agreed to be a pace setter, which means that our campaign will end up probably in September, and we'll be one of the pace setter groups to go in and, and try to finish up. I was very impressed with our United Way staff, and they knew everybody here, and it was a very good report. And generally, when you have excellent United Way giving, that in my mind normally would correspond to very positive worker attitudes toward their jobs. You don't often go and have people contribute to things like that unless they feel good about where they work.
They have, the town employees have always just been great at giving, that. We've never won a car. Always somebody was wanting to win that car, but that hasn't happened yet.
We, uh.
We still came.
They had almost promised us that we would win a car.
Every year they do.
They haven't been right yet.
I know.
We're hoping that this is the year.
Maybe the year, who knows?
It's, uh.
Will you be having a meeting with the employees?
Yes.
And the United Way?
We would be meeting with them between now and then to get our campaign together and maybe have speakers out, and hopefully won't do anything to mess up our good giving from the, from the, the past. The other thing, which was a goal by the mayor and the town council, was to take a look at our insurance, especially our workers' compensation and our liability, fire, lightning, extended coverage. And we went out and got quotes, and we asked the North Carolina League of Municipalities, their trust, to give us a quote, and when we looked at the quote from current company and the quote from the league for this year, it was nearly $50,000 less going with the League of Municipalities, and our finance director, not that she has anything to do, but she and Sharon Apple and others on our staff got that information together. It did help us try to review everything that we had, and so I think it was a good housekeeping effort, but that's a $50,000 difference in what we would have been paying this year from our current quote to what the League of Municipalities, and certainly they insure municipalities all across the state. They understand our business, and they were able to give us excellent prices. So, congratulations to your staff on accomplishing the goal that y'all asked us to do, and that has been done. The other thing that we did is, I know we looked at the family leave policy that the board approved, and the other thing that we did is, is look at our insurance for health, and we added a silver coverage, if you will, that might make our family coverage more affordable. We did have perhaps one or two families that took advantage of that, whereas before, we had, insurance being very high, we had almost priced ourselves out of the market. But one of the employees that joined us on the golf course, I won't mention anybody's name, but was able to take advantage of that. It wasn't, wasn't our superintendent, but, but that helped us as we recruited.
Yeah.
To be able to provide that insurance. And again, I think the board saw that, is they adopted our strategic plan, our outcomes and goals, and I feel like that that one has been accomplished. We've had savings, we provided extra coverage, and we provided extra benefits from our, for our employees. The other thing that we had talked about, or, is I noticed that as we had, had been in this facility for some time, we had some discussion, but one thing I would like to do is to ask the mayor and the board, because I realize the use of the civic center, we have two civic clubs that have used it, we have invited those clubs to try out our golf course, the Menden Hall Room, and to provide warming and internet and, and a dedicated building, and, you know, so they could be served out there. And so, we did meet with both of those just to have them try it and see if they would like it, but I know the, the civic center has been used by one or two other groups in the past, and believing that there is wisdom in a multitude of council, as the mayor would help me to set this up, that maybe we provide a, a little workshop and talk about the civic center, and talk about the use of it, and talk about, you know, how we intend to do it. We wanna be fair, we wanna be equitable, and I know that many of you have some concerns and questions. And as I did share with the mayor today and the mayor pro temp, I said, your town manager works for the board, and if y'all are happy, then I'm happy, and so I suggest that maybe we get together and talk about this issue, and see if we can make sure that we can come as close as we can to serving the most and, and accommodating the purposes of the council, and just seeing what we can come up with. And I'm not one that's gonna try to run anything by anybody, but if we have something that comes up that doesn't quite go down easily, we need to get together and talk about it, and I think since January, we've been successful, and our communications has been good. And what we have here is a team of creative problem solvers, and so we'll get together, and with your permission, if mayor, if you want to set that up with the board, we would go ahead and do that. And the, one of the things also that the board, mayor and the board have done, is you approved a strategic growth plan, and I know that, we know that there's going to be growth and development in our community, and we wanna determine the impact of that. And one of our goals is to prepare a strategic growth plan, and many of you know, we have hired Vaughn Hansen and Benchmark, and we had a game plan here the other day with Warren Miller, and we invited representatives from High Point, from Greensboro, you know, Captain Holder, the Pine Cross Sedgefield, our chief back here, Derek, and several others, and we reviewed the kind of information that we would need, need to make a decision on how we would serve in. would serve in the future. And so we're not waiting for it to happen and figure it out and be a novel idea and something great. And I think your foresight has laid out that we gather that information and we'll be certainly looking at all the items that we mentioned. We'll be, also be looking at sanitation, solid waste services, recycling, looking at growth in our staff here over time and coming in with some projections, taking a look, if you will, at potential income expenditures and make sure that we can make some good decisions. We have a water and wastewater study going on right, you know, right now with Hazen and Sawyer. So we are looking at the things that will impact. And I think one of the things that the mayor and the board did when they hired, they said, Mr. Trem, we need to find out this information and we need to find it out quickly. And so we will be gathering this information. We had our very broad meeting. We also did invite representatives from the school, schools, they were not able to send on anybody, but we did share with them that we would be able to probably tell them, you know, when we looked at the Vaughn's plan, not only for the Johnson Farm area, but from other areas that could grow and develop, you know, what type of student population might be resulting in that and give them that information so that they could plan for the future. And I know I'm not picking on the Department of Transportation, but a lot of times you may share with them things that are going to be coming and they don't, they kinda wait for it to come and then do it. And I know the schools are growing very rapidly in Guilford County and they have things that are actually happening, but what we wanna do is to share well in advance information so that as they plan for the future of schools in this area to serve a growing population, that they will be able to consider this. The other thing that y'all approved tonight was a joint study, one of our strategic growth goals for the fire department. And as we approve that tomorrow, they're gonna pull the trigger once we get everything pre-audited or there, we're going to handle that. We will go ahead and get that study to see the location of a fire station. It may be right where it is now, it could be somewhere else, but it's not a, it's a very scientific thing in terms of where you're gonna be and where the most coverage is gonna be. We have an excellent class two rating and we wanna maintain that rating. And so we're participating 50% with Pine Cross Sedgefield and doing a location study for fire. We have met with Captain Holder, Councilmember Strong and I met earlier and we were talking about this same subject and they seem to have pods of about 10,000 people that they serve. We're obviously about 4,000. Now, we're more of a suburban urban area, but adding the folks did not seem to be, it may be that we would add a person or two over 10 years, but it did not look like there would be a great addition from the police front for servicing our area even if we experienced some growth and development. Two other goals that the...
Well, with Derek is here, do they have any idea how long this study is going to take for the fire department?
Yeah, it's looking at two to three months.
Okay, thank you.
They're looking at two to three months. So again, that would put us in the fall and we hope to complete this along around December or as early as possible, but we were gathering a lot of information from a lot of people. But we invited them all and nearly all came and they said that they would help us on this. And so I think that'll give this mayor and this board opportunity to review impact that growth would have on our ability to serve and our finances. And so we need to be able to answer those questions.
It's disappointing the schools didn't send someone.
I think, it wasn't that they didn't want to, they had somebody, I think, at the last moment sorta not be able to come. It wasn't any negative thing and, you know, they have said, keep us posted and, you know...
At least there is a conversation.
Yeah, there is a conversation. They weren't here, but that's, that's okay. We know where they are and we'll make sure that they're done. Two other things I wanted to report to the board is one of the goals, again, that our mayor and council have established, the one is a candidate information session. And I know that we maybe have not done this in the past, but I think this mayor and this board said, what we would like to do is to invite every person who has signed up for office. And we have some who have signed up for mayor and we have some who have signed up for town council. And I think your feeling is anybody that would offer themselves for service, congratulations. And this board, even though you're all seated and all running, we hope on August the 2nd, from 6:00 to 9, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, that we would invite all of the candidates, and you all would be candidates in this, to come in. And what we would do is to provide pertinent information and from the staff. Our town attorney is gonna be talking about the council manager form of government. Our, we'll have copies of, say, our fire contract and our fire chief will be talking a little bit about fire service. Captain Holder or one of his staff members has been invited, talk about the excellent contract we have with Guilford County Sheriff's Department for Police and a copy of that contract. We'll have copies of budgets, we'll have copies of audits, we'll have copies of planning reports and all the information that we can give and we will share that with all of the folks running for office. And then after that information is presented, if anyone has any questions, they will come in through the town clerk and the town clerk, we will have the appropriate staff answer any questions and we will send it not just to that candidate, but we will send it to all candidates. And I applaud mayor you and the board for opening this up and making sure that everybody has the proper information about our community as they offer themselves for public service.
That's gonna be in this room?
It's gonna be in this room.
Okay.
And, uh, and it's coming quickly. We actually did a game plan with Warren Miller, our facilitator, and we came up with a plan for how we needed to go about it and what we wanted to do. And we have a meeting tomorrow with our staff at 2 o'clock tomorrow and we'll be, start to put this information together. It's a very busy time of the year, but this is very important. And so this is one of the things that you have requested to be done and I want you to know that your manager and your leadership team are working on these things, all 28 of us. We are turning this thing over. The other thing that I also wanted to mention, I know there, you know, we have seen that the property has been, Johnson Farm property has been purchased by D.R. Horton. And one of the things that this board has shown an interest in is hiring a community planner who had architectural and design experience to be an advocate for the town council and the citizens and to make sure, along with our land use attorney that y'all hired several months ago, that we would hold public engagement sessions, try to have information that would lead to some kind of consensus, if you will, or agreement. And, and once we determine what these design standards are and how we wanted this development to go, we would enter into a development agreement with the owner developer to make sure that the things that we wanted done would be included. In other words, there would be some accountability in terms of standards. And really, we have interviewed such a person. We'll share that information and perhaps if we are able to work it out. One of the other goals for the mayor and the town council is that on August the 11th, on a Wednesday, we will hold a joint session with the planning board. And mayor, I know that you'll be inviting the planning board members and this would be from about 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock. And we may well, if we're able to do it, have our community planner with the architectural knowledge and the development knowledge and the planning and who understands how to provide excellent outreach to the community. I'm sure there would be some charrettes and some design things that would take place. And, and I think that rather than have something just come in to us, that this group wanted to make sure that we were proactive, that we had a seat at the table. And certainly, we can't control everything that happens, but we can influence what happens, to have a proper design, if you will, proper outreach and have somebody working with the planning board and with us, along with our land use attorney, Tom Terrell. We have shared this process, if you will, you know, with D.R. Horton and shared with them how we were going about that, this. They certainly are agreeable to working in this particular process with us collaboratively. Obviously, we may have some disagreement along the way. We've got two excellent attorneys and hopefully we'll be able to work these things out. And we have a mayor and a board that are committed to doing the right thing for our community. And so that is one of the things that you have also asked your staff to do, is to make sure that with the strategic growth plan, that we were gathering the proper information and that we had the right people at the, you know, in the right place and that we had advocates, people who really understood planning, who understood design and who understood how this process works and also had worked on large sites in other communities. And we think we have found such a group. Certainly, we have not quite completed everything that we need to, so I share not, you know, who it is, but I wanted to say that mayor and the board have talked about this. I think we've talked about it here in this meeting, some of the things that we would need to be successful. You have authorized me to go out and put that together and I think we have gotten the very best. And we'll, if everything works out on the 11th, we'll talk a little bit about 160D. We'll talk about how we run an effective meeting and maybe we'll have an introduction to our advocate, if you will, in community planning, architecture and design and someone who has maybe 20 or 30 years of experience in doing just this type of thing. Because I was talking to our friends from High Point and I talked to some of my friends from Greensboro and they said, Dave, this is a big project even for us. And, uh, and I shared with them what we might be doing and was asking them about it. And they said, when they had projects like this, they did the same as we did. And this is the town advocate we paid for by the town. And, but we will be working collaboratively, you know, with the owner developer. They own the land, they wanna see it developed. From what I can see, they paid a fair amount of money for it, but we wanna make sure that what we come up is something that's complementary to the existing development in town and that meets criteria that, that we will establish as we go through this process. And certainly we'll have, I'm sure, support from the planning board and we will introduce everybody hopefully on the 11th at our meeting. It's a very important meeting, but this is at your direction and you wanted to get a quick start on it. And I'd say we, we have moved fairly well and my thanks to Matthew Johnson and Anna, you know, our planning staff and everybody else. In a small town, if you're just walking by a door, you might be called in to do something.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of extra people within our small organization, but we are trying to go as quickly as we can. And I thank you for your leadership and direction. And now that we've adopted the plan, you know exactly what we are working on and when we are working on it. I would say one thing to you, though. This is a three to five-year plan and I don't want to have us burn out in the first year, but we are doing a lot of the things and they, a lot of them seem to be falling in place. And I thank you for your support. I thank you for your communication, your nudging from time to time. And I'm, you know, you, our staff and myself are here to serve you. Our job is to make the mayor and the town council successful. And if you guys are doing well, then, then we're doing well. And so I want you to know that, you know, now, I guess I'm used to stepping out a lot of times and I might step into it from time to time, but on the other hand, y'all nudge me appropriately and there's nothing wrong with my hearing. I hear you. And so I'll continue to keep you informed and I know that you'll continue to support and keep me and my staff informed. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Can I ask a few questions?
Yes, ma'am.
First statement. Thank you for bringing us the land use attorney. I think that was an excellent option to protect and help the citizens of Jamestown, I being a taxpayer as well. And I think this idea of the second set attorney to bring in as an advocate for the citizens of Jamestown, I think it needs to be understood that it is for the citizens.
Yes.
And it's bringing their thoughts forward. And I think that what you mentioned as far as getting the groups together ahead of time, it's, it's an excellent idea and thank you again for bringing that wisdom to the table. The other thing I have is just a question. How are we gonna get the other candidates advised to this meeting and how soon would we get that actually going out?
Uh, the, the invitation to the meeting, candidates' forum will be August the 2nd and that will go out, if it hadn't already gone out, it'll go out in the morning. And certainly at the 2nd, we can share with them, you know, the meeting coming up on the 11th. And if not, we can send this, you know, send this out to whoever wants to attend the meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, I was gonna say basically the same thing, but I just wanna say my comfort level has increased with knowing we do have an advocate and land use attorney and a community or urban planner that, like you say, is an expert advising the town and representing the town and, and then being proactive. Like you say, we're not waiting for something to come to us, another plan. And so I said, my comfort level is, is increased having that representation.
Well, my compliments to the board on, on this process. A lot of folks have not used this and a lot of folks have not been done well and they have not been proud of what has come out. But we need to have influence. You represent the citizens and you want to have influence and a seat at the table. And I think the process that you're yield, doing is going to yield positive results for this community for some time to come. And, you know, it's certainly, uh, something that hasn't been done a lot by towns our size, but in my humble opinion, you cannot afford not to do this. You just have, otherwise you'll just have to be pleased with...
I think it shows we're being vocal. Before, the way that the system or the project came through, so many, there were people that were saying we were being silent and not being supportive of the needs and wants, but what they, a lot of people don't understand, until we're presented something here in this chambers, we aren't gonna make any noise about it because we don't know what we're gonna be presented. because we don't know what we're going to be presenting. And in this particular case, by sending something out and having an advocate for us, our voice is stronger to begin with as a town and as citizens. And I think that's very important.
Well, this is a great process. This project is big for anybody in our big county. And we should know less because it's going to have a greater impact on us than something like this would have in these other communities. And so I feel good about the bold steps that you're taking. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any committee reports?
Yes. Well, June the 28th, we had a Zoom plant update committee meeting. And we talked about future land use, Main Street and downtown design concepts. And I made y'all a copy of these. There's two different ones, John. Can you just? Thank you, sir. And, you know, the Zoom meetings are just hard to have conversations. So pretty much Vaughn presented this stuff. And so then we had an in-person meeting on July the 13th. And I thought it was a great meeting. There was a lot of conversation and discussion with the committee members. And so these things you're getting, like I said, especially with the future land use categories, there was a lot of discussion. And Vaughn took a lot of feedback from the committee members. And so said he's going to incorporate those changes and insights into these. And then we'll have another meeting with the results. But I wanted y'all to have these because it is new. And so it's good for y'all to know we're trying to stay on track with what this committee's doing. The council's aware of it as well. On July the 12th, there was a TAC meeting. It was a special call meeting. We don't have a meeting in July. But it was just, there was an action item that had to be approved. But it dealt with safety performance measures for the transit system for High Point and Randolph and Davidson County. So it really didn't apply to Jamestown. And Thursday, July 22nd, Paul and I are going to meet with Wright Archer with DOT and give him a tour of the town. And we've got a list of several DOT things. And there's the Pet Head. There's the Storm Drain and then a list of other things. And actually, we had scheduled a meeting with him on June 22nd. And it was one day it rained like a hurricane. So we, you know, delayed it until July the 8th. And then I got sick. And so this is the third time. So I'm hoping the third time's the charm and that he'll come to town and we'll get a good relationship with him and show him several things. So that was all that we've had.
Okay.
Thanks, Martha. I don't have anything. Let me in.
Lawrence, anything?
No.
The Livable Communities Committee met via Zoom on July 8th to discuss the draft proposal for inclusion in AARP's network of age-friendly states and communities. And so that went well. Everybody responded well to the draft. And now we've sent it to Mark Hensley from the state AARP office, who looks over the triad. He's looking at the proposal to provide feedback. But our local representative, who comes to, or, you know, joins in on the meetings, Bob Gurkin, thinks we're likely to attain the designation with the work we've done so far and what we're planning to do. So we're all excited about that. And then also during the meeting, we got an update on the town's new relationship with Alliance Code Enforcement. And folks were interested in that. And then the next meeting will happen in September.
Excellent. Matthew Johnson and I attended the first PTRC meeting since January 2020.
Really?
In person on June the 16th. There was no official program, but it was like Martha was saying, a lot of housekeeping things had to be taken care of, the budget for the coming year and that sort of thing. So we look forward to getting back on schedule with that. Any other committee reports? Do we have any other business?
Well, I did want to say a big thank you to Judy for the insurance. That's a huge savings. And I know that's a lot of hard work and the comparison, the time it takes. But I really, that was awesome. You can't get a big savings like that just anytime. So thank you so much for doing that. And then I wanted to say I went to the Mexican restaurant and ate last night. And they do breakfast now. Did y'all know that? From eight to 11 every day. So, you know, there was no place to get breakfast in town. So I was, well, let everybody know that and go get some food. And the YMCA is doing their Bright Beginnings, which is the backpack and donations. And they are in need of donations for the backpack.
They need backpacks.
I heard they were short 50 this year.
50 backpacks.
So I was going to call them. I'm not sure who to call, but I'll just call them.
Marley.
Mar, okay. And then the Jamestown Pig Pick and the date has been set for that, which is Saturday, October the 9th. And it's going to be at Dr. Stephen Andrea Davis's house this year. That's the family services, you know, fundraising.
Any other business? Judy, would you come forward? Because the council and I wanted to present you with the award that you received back in June.
Back in June?
And this is the Award of Financial Reporting Achievement to the Finance Department for the Town of Jamestown. And we are very proud of you. And we had a little, another.
Let me take y'all's picture.
Yes, yes. Turn, turn and do all the pictures.
Smile like you're happy. Do it one more. Okay. And while you're standing up here, the mayor and the council were talking one day. Said we've got Municipal Clerks Week. We've got Public Works Week. But we don't have a Finance Officers Week. And, you know, that's just wrong. And we all agreed that. And we love you and appreciate you so much. And so we wanted to show that to you. And I'll just go ahead and take this out so it won't be so awkward. But it's going to be awkward anyway. And this says, World's Greatest Financial Director 2021 and Beyond, Judy Garner. And you got your money bags on there.
And you can never retire this record, ever.
With no other business, counsel, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session per General Statute 143 dot 11 to discuss matters related to personal and attorney-client privilege for Lori Heron, 2216 Guilford College Road versus Town of Jamestown.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, second. Aye. Have good evening, you all.